It's just an info item.
Let's go ahead and begin. We'll call the meeting to order.
Mr. Clausen?
Here.
Ms. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Upchurch?
Here.
To view the livestream video of this meeting, please go to the Lewis Mauer District 38 YouTube page. Mr. Schwartz, would you mind leading Mrs. Pledge allegiance?
I'd like to.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ron. Our first work session, the agenda item number one is the district director boundaries update. Mr. Shannon Bigum is here with us. We appreciate your attendance today. I will let you go ahead and go through this presentation.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Well, every four years, school districts in the state of Colorado that use the director district forum of apportionment are required to conduct a reapportionment. Approximately one-half of the 178 or six districts in the state use this form of representation, the others use at-large. But those who use it are required to do a reapportionment similar to a congressional reapportionment every four years. I do a lot of these. I've been used by the court system as an expert witness. And the desired parameter for these is that they be within 3% of each other in size. So the key facets of the statute are that they be compact, contiguous, and as nearly equal in size as possible. So since the census does not publish data every, every four years, we use population estimates from a company called ESRI or Environmental Research Systems Incorporated. ESRI provides data to all sorts of grant writers and municipal agencies and others who need census estimates of small units of geography's population between the times when the census happens. So the 2020 census data won't be available until 2022 probably. So everybody in the country is using this particular dataset. The census also provides updates through its American Community Survey. A lot of that data of late has not been in very good condition. We've used it to the extent that we can. But coincidentally, I worked on some master plan work for you and enrollment forecasting. So I have some updated housing estimates that I was able to use to develop some really good estimates of population. What we have found is that, if I can figure out this now, I got it, okay. Is that we have four of our districts that are within, that are exceeding this 3% variance parameter. So District 1 is under by 3%, District 2 is over by 7%, and District 3 was under by about 5%. So that really triggered the need to make some minor changes. And what I did was conduct a geographic examination of the district. And I was able to come up with a scenario that brings all of the districts into compliance. Within 1% of each other are roughly 60 or 70 people. Now, when we do these reapportionments, they're not enrollment, they're not registered electors, it's not people who are over 18. It's everybody. So we use, by statute, an estimate of total population. And I've been able to come up with a scenario that keeps our 2016 director districts fundamentally intact. But I'm proposing this 2020 director district map that focuses on changes in three small shift areas that you see on this map. Over toward Palmer Lake, I'm identifying an area that would move from District 2 to District 1. Up in the north central part of the district, I'm identifying an area that would move from District 4 to District 3. And then over in our most rapidly developing area, I propose moving an area from District 2 to District 4. So by doing that little shell game, I'm able to reapportion the district in a manner that brings us into compliance without making major changes. And those demographers that are working on reapportionments in 2020 are trying to make this incremental changes because when we get actual data from the 2020 census, which will be available in 2022, usually it's pretty different from 10 years of estimates, which is what you're working with after the 2010 census, you start working with estimates. So all over the country, people that are doing congressional reapportionments, city council board reapportionments, and school board director reapportionments are trying to minimize their changes because we know that when we get the actual data, we don't want to have this big floodgate of big changes that happen when we actually get actual data. This data is pretty good because we've got a pretty high-quality housing inventory for the district that we actively maintain. So my recommendation is that you employ the scenario that I'm showing here in this desired 2020 map. No existing directors are displaced. And this would be the kind of incremental change that would avoid big changes in 2024 if we were required to do this again. I've probably done 140 of these over the last 38 years. This one is very clean. And I'd be delighted to respond to any questions that you might have at this point.
I have a question. This is the question we typically have in Miami. Okay. Whenever we look at the growth within our district, whether our sister district has positions at large, in other words, on geographical area. Mr. Foster, can you just remind us why we are required to go through this process first due to at-large, such as a similar district to ours?
Well, it has to do with how the district was historically incorporated or designed. And this district had always had separate representation districts rather than at-large seats. Shannon could probably speak more to this historical knowledge. But there tends to become, there could become, rather, there could become a disproportionate amount of people in one geographical area if more were at-large, particularly in a smaller district such as ours, where individuals' representation could be condensed to one small geographic area in that large situation. Which I believe was perhaps the original onus for splitting this district into this representational district. I think what you said, half are, the strength of the half, or the half of the strength of the way we are assigned district directors and others are split up. There was a district to our south that had at-large seats the one time in, what did he say? Three of the district directors ended up living in one area, one geographical neighborhood.
And there are a couple of examples of that around the states, around the state. Half the districts have districts, the other half have had at-large. Some have a hybrid. But a lot of the districts that have director districts like them because they look at some examples where there may have been three school board members that resided in one subdivision. And there was criticism on the board that they weren't broadly dispersed throughout the district. Now, again, you're elected at-large. So for the general public out there, this is not like a city council board kind of thing where you only vote for your directory neighborhood. You vote for everyone. But the purpose of director districts is to spread board candidates and the seated board out geographically throughout the district so that there's a broad geographic distribution of representation, but then everyone is elected at-large.
How many, how many districts have at-large versus?
It's almost exactly one half. So half of the districts are at-large, half have districts, and a couple of the mountain districts that have had extreme problems getting board candidates from some parts of their communities. And some of the eastern Colorado districts have gone to a hybridized approach where they'll have four or three districts and then two or three at-large members elected. So that preserves some of the desirable aspects of having districts, but allows them to make sure that they get a board candidate from certain areas. Moffett School District down south of Salida, this is an example of that. Buena Vista School District is an example of districts that have that hybridized approach.
I have one other question. So this is the proposed one, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, so District 1 still has a portion that comes across I-25 into Woodmore. And so that representation is typically west side of I-25, Palmer Lake down to Monument. And then a slipper, like a postage stamp, up in Woodmore. Does District 3 have stayed pretty steady, or has it changed also?
Let's look back in retrospect at the circumstances for it.
Well, the last slide showed where you were voting from too. I think that's what the question about probably is.
Yeah, District 3 was small, so I needed to add more people to that one. But as far as the shift areas, I did not need to touch that area, so I did not. I just focused on three isolated areas that were able to bring us into compliance. And again, when the 2020 census is published, if you would like to direct me or another demographer to do larger-scale changes, you would have good data to rely on at that point. But for this exercise, we're trying to accept the fact that we've got 10 years of estimates that we're working with as far as how many people live in these areas. Because the census is essentially 10 years old. And we're working with a forecast and an estimate at this point. So generally speaking, most demographers that are looking at these kinds of things are trying to make incremental focus changes. And just an example, I can bring you, we call East Grand School District up in Winter Park. This is the district where we thought we were getting great estimates leading up to 2010. And then when the 2010 census came out, there had been so many housing affordability and resort housing changes in Winter Park, Brady, Faber Nash area, that the census actual was drastically different than the census estimates through the odds, and so we went with these incremental changes. So that's an example of this report. And those actuals finally came out, they're pretty significant and different than the estimates of the census itself is probably changing.
So I guess going back to that, between the one and the three, going back and forth. And it looks like you're putting, you're changing it so part of the portions of two, which is that is a high build area, making that part of District 1. If I read that right, right?
Yes, I'm pushing those two areas, that two into one, I'm trying to reduce the size of District 2. And that two into four, I'm trying to reduce the size of District 2 in another area and push those, that population into District 4. And then in order to balance the population in District 4, I push some of that into District 3. So there's kind of two areas where I'm removing population in District 2. So District 2 is the area that's concentrated, just for the listening audience, District 2 is the area that is concentrated around Bear Creek and is spilling over into the developing southwestern corner of the district as well. And the area that's kind of the western edge of Monument. So that has always been District 2. So that's a area where you're trying to reduce the size of that district on the population scale.
So it's fair to say that you, as you introduce this, you've tried to do this with the least impact possible just to meet the legal requirements of re-sizing the director districts?
Yes, and I was having this conversation with the 27 Gay or Asian Native Borlaas. And basically, until we get hard census data, most demographers that are doing these kinds of analyses are saying, you know, now may not be the best time to make broad sweeping changes until we get actual numbers as opposed to what we're asking for.
Any other question?
Just out of curiosity of the follow-up of what Mr. Clausen was saying, or asking. I'm always curious when, when the difference between, I understand why we have district representation versus at-large. What is the process to change that? Or what is?
As a board, we can, I'm not real sure that it requires an election. I don't know. That would be a question for your attorney. But I have held several boards that have wanted, you know, because I've done this for a while, that have wanted the transition from districts to at-large, or from districts to hybrid, or from at-large to districts. So, and over the last six years, mostly for mountain and rural districts, there have been probably a handful of transitions. And your attorney could tell you what that process would involve. I don't recall Moffett School District and Buena Vista School District having an election to facilitate that. I don't, I don't really exactly remember how that was accomplished, but your attorney could tell you. And...
Well, Doug, your summers, or Bob, do you guys have recommendations? What does the district feel about this? Do you have it?
Our recommendation, Mr. Foster, I would believe concurs with this, would be to consider and ultimately adopt the recommendation that you have here in front of you. I think that's the cleanest, most straightforward, least impactful to how we've been doing things and how we would continue to do things at least over the next four years. Certainly, if there were a desire from the board to entertain a different option, then consistent with what Mr. Brigham Duss shared, I would recommend that we consult our attorney and look into what exactly would be involved with that. But at least from where I sit, I think you have a very straightforward and clean recommendation that's in front of you. And I would just remind that we have two upcoming meetings. So this was our first opportunity to share the information with you. We'll have a first reading of what this change would signify for our community at the October 26th board meeting, with the intent to then move forward with a second reading and final approval at the November 16th regular meeting. So if you wanted to have more community input, there should remain an opportunity at both of those meetings to get more information or to be back with the community should you desire to do so.
The statute requires us to do this before year end.
Correct. December 31st would be the timeline that we're on to finally adopt them first.
So is it fair to say that this, again, this recommendation is the least disruptive? And it meets the requirements of the statute?
Yes.
And we then could, the next board could, look at, once the census data is out in '21 or '22, relook at this, we don't have to wait the full four years.
No, you do not. And some of the districts that have had drastic population changes have gone in a two-year cycle. So for example, I think I'm doing one for Mesa 51 in Red Junction after two years just because quite a few things have shuffled out there.
They may, they may continue to shuffle in here, but I, you know, without information, what, what can we really do until we get a couple of years out when we actually have census data? So I think we just go with the plan that they proposed. And then we'll have our first reading at the upcoming board meeting. I don't know, anybody else have any other ideas? They all have questions, suggestions. Good? Okay. Thank you very much.
You're most welcome.
Thank you.
The next agenda item today in our work session is the Grace Best Education Facility Future Statement.
So I'm gonna shift my position to the next Mr. Foster, since we'll be co-presenting. Okay. So we have a presentation here before you that will summarize a number of variables as we're talking about where we currently sit with Grace Best Educational Complex here. Let's drive for the moment. So our purpose today is to give you an overview of the current physical state of the Grace Best Educational Facility and the portable which sits just to the east of our big red building. That will include a review of the value of the expenses as well as a cost to extend the useful life, as well as facilitating the discussion on essential questions to help inform our next steps. So essentially, what do we want to do, when, how, or how much? So Bob's gonna take us through the first several slides here, and then I'll lead us more to the discussion pieces.
All right, so Grace Best has served the district as every type of facility we can imagine. It started out as a high school, it was a middle school, it was an elementary school. And now it services our transitions programs, our homeschool enrichment program, and a variety of other things. You can see that this is a, it's very unique to the fact that the original wing, when you're looking at it, 1959 wings were built back then. And that has some impact for us here in a few minutes when we talk about it. The gym was added on again in 1965, that's the gym. And then we have the two, 1973 additions, one is the music room, weight room on the east side of the facility. And then the south side of the facility has the additions to a girls locker room. What is very interesting about that facility is that the original locker room may have been built back in the 60s as a project by Cadence, civil engineering project back with Cadence. But that was back in the day before we did building permits. So there's no drawings of building permits, you know, we just didn't have that. 88, the 88 wing is, is the two-story wing and is pretty solid functionally in that. Going on. Your own. Current use, like I said, homeschool enrichment academy, the 1988 wing services over 125 students one day a week. We have the transition program which has, current time serves about 15-plus students in the lower end of the 1988 wing. And then we have other spaces in there that are utilized by a variety of people and things. The 1973 music storage area is used by barbotics, our barbotics team, because it's nice open space. They can use that. We typically have a lot of storage in there right now. We rent the gym out for the craft show. Sadly, the craft show will not continue into this year because COVID. The Kiwanis Law didn't know that just a couple of days ago. And then we have, of course, we use the gym as a testing facility for eight tests. And then we have the science kid refurbishing center. And one of those wings, two of the big old science rooms are used as the refurbishing center. Two or three of those rooms are used as that. The rest of that is storage. We have a couple of attendants who office out there right now, just for space. Just because the school buildings themselves, COVID, have spread things out a little bit more. Value, looking into the value of that facility. I had it praised a few months ago in April, about 4.5 million by the Horn River Canadian Company. Approximately just that 23 acres that the school sits on. It did not include the plaque facility. The plaque facility, as you recall, will be used to help the Pizza Hut. Pizza Hut is 1979 addition that they added on just before they built the new high school. Before the high school moved over there. And the Pizza Hut is currently used as a platform for Palmer Lake, which I'm in. Center, and we have that full of preschoolers. The 4.5 million, one of the things that came about when we started to discuss selling that land, any type of land, the district owns between Second Street over here and all the way down to San Antonio, pretty much. We own that whole parcel of land. What the evaluation did not contemplate was taking a chunk of land out of the middle of what the district owned. In other words, we have utility access that runs across that land for this facility. We also have stuff that goes to the maintenance and grounds guys down there. Our utility accesses go across there. When we replaced a 100-year-old sewer line in this building in the last couple of years, that sewer line now runs up through Grace Best parking lot. So, and right around that, curves out there. So those things tend to make an impact. Those have to be considered. If you're thinking of selling, at any point you think of selling that building, you have to think about what else is underneath that building. That also serves the other sites. At one point in time, the gas ran off of that building to the platform. Now it doesn't, but there are all sorts of utility things over the last 100 years, 70 years for that building that cross each other out there. Current operating expenses we spend...
Oh, before you put one, okay, appraisal. What's the 23 acres?
That is approximately the footprint of that building. Footprint of the building, parking lot, there, the parking lot that includes it, that goes out here to the street right here on Jumper Street.
So it's between Jumper Street and... It includes the bus bar and...
It does not include the bus bar in that, no. It may stretch, that line may stretch down to about the maintenance building, the backside of that maintenance building. What's very interesting is that maintenance building at one point in time was the actual Lewis Mauer High School shop class and bus bar. So that maintenance building at one point in time was part of the Grace Best Educational Facility. It was part of that building. Now it's not really, we really use that as a separate thing, a separate entity. So that 23 acres would be a really weird shape. It does include flooding, which is hard to imagine that.
Or the portable, the...
Or the portable, because the portable is actually part of this block. But understand that these lots of land are not split at all. They're all contiguous, which is, thank you. That's part of the problem. Operating expenses about $22,000, custodial staff. We do not currently have custodial staff assigned to that building. Our guy here, Rafael, super dude, is picking up part of that too for this car. And he's working, he's working. Ongoing repairs, maintenance, approximately $10,000 a year. Danny and I talked about this. He keeps it living along. He keeps the part that we use working and doesn't try to put a whole lot into the 1959 wing. That includes, we ended up hatching the roof on that KPE back then. You'll remember the KPE audit showed that it was about $300 and some thousand dollars to replace the roof total on that 1959 wing. And that's a real generous estimate because we're not entirely sure what is better, bad, than 70-year-old decking on that roof. Roof decking is the biggest question.
I have a question. I have a text from a member of the public saying, "They see the video but no audio." Okay, let's go on. Okay.
Mr. Foster, can I ask you a quick question?
You may.
As we move through and we're thinking about where most of the general use of the site is, it's the 1988 wing, is that correct?
Heavenly, the 1988 wing with any type of student use, yes.
Okay, thanks.
We have a leaky wood, like I said, a leaky roof membrane on the top of that 1959 wing and water damage underneath that to some degree over the last years that we have patched, we've put it back together and we keep it running. But, and then we have ongoing age-related issues. Like anything that gets older, it tends to break a little bit more. We have some plumbing issues in there and some other, other issues that tend to need to be fixed every so often. The biggest thing, of course, you will hear is asbestos. Yes, there's asbestos inside of the old 1959 wing. Most of the current issues in the 1959 wing are the tunnels that you've been down in there, and I think you've all had a tour. It's encapsulated, I shouldn't say encapsulated, that is not the correct word. It is enclosed in the space of the tunnels. It is the old insulation wrap around, that's my mind going in and out, around, around the heating and cooling, or the heating vents. There's no cooling vents back in the day. They didn't put HVAC for cooling in buildings like that. We have some counters, the tabletops, installations, and caulkings throughout the building that have asbestos. Back in the day, they were in everything, pre-1970 something, they were in almost everything. Tiles under the carpet, we have two or three layers of tiles and carpet that uses that building. So walls and ceilings in the locker rooms, walls and ceilings in the locker rooms have heavily asbestos. If you go back, abatement, we've done some abatement already in that building, 2007, we took out about 600 square feet of tile. 2008, we took out a lot of popcorn ceilings and bolted wings where there was asbestos in the old popcorn. And then in 2014, we had the major asbestos release down in the boys locker room where a plumber knocked into a wall and found that the wall behind the wall, that's what you find in those buildings, a wall behind a wall, was asbestos wallboard. And that had to be abated. By the way, just under, anything over nine square feet is like a major thing in EPA rules. So major, yeah, it's like a shower. It was like your bathroom at home. That's what we abated. We cut it out, abated it properly, and it's just sitting there without any wall. So you have also down in there some CMUs, some concrete reassembly unit, and some popcorn ceilings down there that are also have asbestos in them still. So it's a lot of it. That's where it is. Site considerations. There are a lot of site considerations when you talk about the Grace Best facility regarding all of it. CDE report back to 2015 listed site deficiencies about, over a little over three quarters of a million dollars. Those deficiencies were just due to aging out of equipment, aging out of electrical panel, aging out of plumbing, lack of adequate parking. One of the things called to is, is that back when Grace Best was used last, the asbestos didn't exist to the east of it. That wasn't built, so that was just a field. And St. Pete's didn't have a, a big school there, which if you've driven through the street over here on Second Street, at that time, to certain times of the day, we find out what big it is, so by the traffic. And we also saw that volume, local roads, was never anticipated 30, 40 years ago, certainly not 70 years ago. Additional playground located on the site, if we ever put that back into use, we'll use, we probably have to think about how to build the site. Right now, we've got equipment part of that. Playground access is limited. It is sadly, the location to the south there is the location of the former dump. And back in the 30s, 40s through there, there was a dump down in there, and every so often we still have stuff floating to the surface. So it works its way out, just geology. And then we have proximity to our fueling facilities. Our fueling tanks for our bus and transportation vehicles are right on the other side, they're right between maintenance and grounds, which may need to be moved if we ever consider using that part of the land itself.
Before you move on, I'm sorry. Is 759, 915, was that included in the KPE?
No, that was prior, that was prior to KPE. That was before the KPE audit. CDE had done an audit back in 2015 of the site, and that was just.
I'm sorry, let me try again. Did the independent assessment of cost include that 760,000?
It was, it included the information from that audit. It based its numbers, KPE based its numbers on modern, or on five years of increases.
Did it address these deficiencies?
It addressed those deficiencies, yes. Addressed the deficiencies, the cost itself was modern, was five years later.
Essentially revalidated.
It revalidated.
The CDE report lifted up as well as found additional items that were not obviously included from five years previous.
Can I ask a good question? Picking back, picking back off of what Chris asked, I don't recall with that KPE quote, did it include having to remove the fuel tanks or?
No. No. That's an additional expense. That may actually be something that shows up in the long-term plan for, or as, as we discussed, long-term planning, the long-term facility's use because those tanks are getting older.
Right.
It has some tanks aged. You're required to mitigate them. And the EPA is very picky about fuel tanks.
Right. And remember, that's discussed up in Denver often, in proximity to schools.
Proximity of fuel tanks to schools and that.
Yes. So do we have a timeline of when we're gonna have to replace those anyway?
We're currently exploring that in the next two to three years.
Okay.
So that, that is one of those capital projects that we're trying to figure out exactly what we need to do, when we need to do it, based on the current, current lifespan of those.
Is there a timeline, calendar date that drives that, triggers that, or is it when a leak occurs or under some sort of?
There is, there is like a 30 to 35-year timeline on those, and those are reaching that point. Those are.
What is that date is?
Actually, one of them is 30th, and the other one is 26th or 21st.
And that would be from starting when?
1986, 1987.
Just 2000.
Yeah. It's one, the first one, and then there were some repairs and got stuff done in the late 80s, early 90s.
So 30 years, we're already past it.
We're past it, one part of it. We're at 30 in one part of it from the repair. We just have some work done this year.
Is the portion that's already past due anticipated in our capital budgeting process today?
Not currently. That's why I said we, we did some work on it this last summer. That should extend that life a little bit. So we did some work this last summer.
Capital work or?
Yeah, about $10,000 worth. Fixed some stuff and.
Extended the life of the tanks?
To a degree, yes. We'll see, we'll see. Whenever you start getting into that, extending the life of those items is good for a certain amount of time. That's why we're looking at, we're, we began exploring right now. In fact, Chuck and I had a meeting earlier last week, and we're looking at setting out a replacement of those.
So it'll be in our budgeting process?
Yeah. That's one of those things that is getting older. The portable out there, out back to the east, was put there in Oido, it was moved, it was moved out of the high school. It had been at Lewis Palmer High School originally in about, I think it was '02, off the floor. It, as you can see from the pictures, has had a long life. That's the floor inside of it, that's the ceiling inside of it, some of those tiles it leaves. It is cracked because it is settled in a weird way since it's been moved. Talked to an architect, and the architect had said probably the last move was the last move when he moved it there. He wouldn't, he wouldn't advise moving it again for our use. KPE's, and this is from KPE study, building is currently not heated or cooled, plugging and electrical is cut to it. Flooring is in poor condition, but you can read that.
Has it ever been used?
Yes. It was used for a couple of years by Grace Best before they moved Grace Best to its current location.
There's an elementary school classroom?
Yeah, we, yes, it was used as an elementary, and prior to that, it was used at the high school, it's Lewis Palmer High School.
Just since it was here.
Since it was here, yes. But it has been dormant the last, since '09, '10, so last 11 years. It's last, last year, so we're not supposed to use that for storage. Because it does not sprinkle any electrical, not that. Been broken into a couple of times, it's a security, ongoing security nightmare.
So it's a 20-year-old trailer, it hasn't been used for 10 years, about, give or take.
About that, yeah. 20 years hasn't been used, and it would take, off the top of my head, I think the last set of estimates was $80,000 plus to rehab. Now be careful, off the top of my head. That is totally, and I have estimates on it, but I can provide them. Cost estimates, it's been used, useful life. 2015 estimated it at 4.5, that was Grace Best itself. We had KPE study seven to nine million to refit the building. That did not include furniture, equipment, technology. The abatement, the estimate on the KPE audit was 150,000. It is variable by what is found. What that means is generally when you dig into walls in that old building, you're never quite sure what you're going to find. What was done in 1959, we added on to without a record in 1960 or 70, we don't know.
Can you, the CDE study and the KPE study, can you add those numbers together or are they totally separate?
No, they're totally separate.
Okay.
CDE study is, is five to six years prior to that, and was not as inclusive, I would say, or as comprehensive as the KPE study. KPE did a much more comprehensive job, I think, in evaluating all aspects of the building. CDE, when you read the 2015, it, they overlap with many of their identification of the deficiencies, the power plant, the electrical, those things, yes.
And the KPE study is dated?
2020. April of, April of this year, I think is the final.
April, and then it was updated in June.
It was updated in June.
For the estimate.
They've come back to take a look, but there's no snow on the roof.
Question for you on that?
Yeah.
On the KP study, does KP have any segment or line of business in their organization that is engaged in construction of new facilities?
Not to our knowledge.
Thank you.
They are more of an architectural firm, and we just contracted with them to do a review of the building and share their findings from that analysis.
Thank you. That's important for us to know.
Appreciate that.
So the other impacts, site consideration is not included in the cost as much of the KPE study? So you have fields, traffic, and again, the bus, approximately the bus park and control and maintenance. We have those facilities sitting right within that. If you go back to the old middle school and high school, field where grounds and maintenance parks the clouds and drops the clouds, right now, we used to be football field from back in the day. So there are many things that were not included in that, so you're probably, that's probably what pushed that 9 million up, but also could unknowingly push that 9 million up is, is there more abatement than what we know? We have, we feel like we have a pretty good handle on asbestos right now identified in that building. But that is always, but given that you rip the carpet up and you find more, or you knock down a wall and you find more. That wasn't anywhere.
So I think you said you don't have a lot of confidence in the KPE?
No, I have a great degree, I would say a great degree of confidence. What I, what I always doubt is, when you start knocking walls down, you tend to find things that are unknown.
It's fair to say that they're primarily around the asbestos abatement?
Yeah.
That would be our one question mark. It's just no way to know until we're actually engaged in that process.
I think we have a really good idea at this point. Let's, let's lie, let's hope.
So the way we constructed this presentation, we've got more slides, and what I would request is, we've covered a lot of the here's what, sort of a summary, which I think you all have probably heard in one way, shape, or form at some different point in this timeline. We're in a little bit of a so what now part, and so here's how we're framing this conversation, and that's gonna lead us into more of a now what. So more discussion and engagement from you all in this process. So as we see it, there are currently four different options that are available to us in terms of how we might proceed. We're labeling option A, not in any sort of prioritization here, this is just the options as we would detail them out, would include a renewal of the site. And when we say renewal, I think I want to make it really clear, this is not a renovation and a big remodel, but again, a refitting of the building that would essentially allow us to maintain the life, the useful life of the facility as it is. So we would identify both the 73 and 88 wing renewal as a piece of that, and then a bigger conversation and decision around what do we do with that 1959 wing? Clearly, there is a case to be made for the demolition, as opposed to all of the different potential refitting needs that that wing would demonstrate.
Okay, so you approach a question there. The KPE numbers, as I recall, anticipated remodeling the 1959, or refurbishment?
That was one way to look at it, yes. That essentially was built into their assumption, was not a, but when we say remodel, renovate, I'm looking at that as, for example.
Put it in service.
Yes, yes.
So what you're saying is, A is not putting the 59 in the service necessarily, focusing on the 88 and 73 portions of that site?
Yes.
Which, we don't have an estimate for A at this point.
That's the second bullet of A, correct. So we could clearly add another sublet and say remodel as a 1959 wing.
Did KPE break it out that way?
No, because I don't think we gave them that directly in terms of including that as part of the potential.
So the KPE report was restoration?
Yes.
Now, what you're saying is, one option is taking 73 and the 88, renew it?
Yeah.
And demolish 59 section. That's, that's a option that we haven't really seen.
A suboption and then the bigger option. I think my biggest concern with 59, if I'm gonna just say it this way, is there may be more problems than what we can even anticipate with that. Is that really worth the time and the resources invested?
I'm still pulling my foot out of one of the floor joists that I fell through.
That was good humor, Mr. Taylor, I appreciate that. So to be even more comprehensive, yes, I think it would be fair to add a sublet, two options of sublet. What do we do with that 59 wing? Renovate as it is or completely demolish? Another option, option B, is just continue as is, this is what we've essentially been doing for the past 10 years. A third option, option C, is selling the property. A fourth option, and when we say start over, the way I would define that is, we would potentially think about leveling the entire site and having a grand new something. So that certainly is another way to think about proceeding. We did a quick little asterisk at the bottom here that elevated the fact that this is not the first time we've had conversations with our community about this. Most recently, and specifically on February 5th, there was a detailed D38 deliberates that covered this topic, among others, but there was certainly a lot of feedback that was collected at that time that had a myriad of suggestions that probably would go a little bit further than what we presented here for you, but that's something we just wanted to call out and elevate. So a couple more slides here with some additional conversation. As we consider the, moving forward to proceed with the detailed cost and design of Grace Best, we have to make sure that we include whatever we're doing as a 100% asbestos abatement. That has to be a priority. We certainly can think about a reconfiguration of the site to afford, among other things, more fields and playground or potentially more building space. We are taking a little bit of a frame at this point to encourage a focus on the potential use of a flexible facility if we were to move board with doing something. There are several needs that we have listed here, and we're not necessarily suggesting that one is more of value than others, but. but certainly we could envision a small grade school, about a 300-student grade school. We could think about the site being a centralized preschool site. We have to think about regardless of where we're potentially going, the impact to current district programs if we were to make a change, but certainly we could also think forward to other district programs and of course, we're just calling out a few that are currently utilizing the facility. Important to also elevate that there are other community programs and some interest that we've had. Really, big idea type conversations around monumental impact, being a career tech ed program that we could coordinate with, affording more opportunities for CTE programs and the like. We know that we currently have our senior center that is growing. They have expressed the potential of interest in a more longer-term sustainable site. That portable outside of Lewis Palmer High School is also running its course. So that's definitely another need. Pikes Peak Library District has also expressed potential interest in finding a greater community facility as they grow. And there may be others, but that has not been anything that we have formally investigated. Those are just through a variety of conversations that just naturally occur in the course of our everyday work. And then something that we do think makes the most sense, at least as an initial step, certainly not a comprehensive step, but the portable that is just sitting to our east, we would recommend is auctioned so that it gives us more opportunity and flexibility, not only from our current need for additional parking, but as we think about the bigger needs of the complex as a whole, that would be another item for considerations.
Just a point of clarity, it says potential focus on a flexible facility, then you have four of them.
Yep.
So it could be some part of all four or are any of them mutually exclusive?
I think, it depends, right? So if we were looking at it being a small grade or elementary school, more than likely that would be the primary use of that facility. Depending on what's still available in the design of the community, is there room for some of the other programs that we've called out here, potentially? But I think that would be one of the factors that we would want to really be clear about prior to making an official recommendation. Certainly preschool use is another one that we would want to think through if that were the, one of the primary sole programs that were identified there. At the same time, based on where we currently house our preschool across multiple sites, do we need as big of a site for preschool? I don't know that that's something that we have completely fleshed out in that terminology. And I think along with your question, and this will take us to our last slide here, which will be more conversation. Really, the way to frame a lot of this discussion right now is, well, what are our future needs? And how might the Grace Best educational facility be able to address those? So, can the site be renovated and utilized? Absolutely can, but to what end and for what impact? This is our term, 21st century flexible learning environment. We, in order to think future focus and longer-term sustainable impact, need to acknowledge that currently the way that facility is running, we don't see that the sustainability of the site would allow for some of these programs to be a longer-term plan unless we were to do some pretty drastic renovation and remodeling. Is there value to the community complex? I think that's a bigger conversation, one that we may want to entertain with our community. So if we are going to change, how can we address the current programming at Grace Best facility today? Something I just want to call out is, I do not want to create stress and anxiety for transitions folks or recruitment folks and others, because this is not saying that the experts have the plan, but certainly that has to factor into whatever the plan becomes. And then another great one is just how and when should we engage the community on this topic? So, this was our intent, was to really just put as many of the pieces out on the table, explore different ways that they might connect, get your input and feedback to be able to develop more of a game plan for how do we move forward. Not necessarily a decision right now today, obviously, of what do we do with the site, but this was our best step forward to put the comprehensive information in front of you and then open forward to more dialogue.
So first of all, great job. This is a tough topic and you did a really wonderful, comprehensive job trying to look at all the angles we could think about. And just for us as a team, as a reminder, we all wanted to have this discussion. It's one of those wonderful things that when you talk about on the surface, it looks like there's opportunity here for us to do something. When you dig into it deeply, you realize there's a lot of complexity and potential impact that goes with it. But at the end of the day, as we think through this as a team, it's really important that we think about why we came here in the first place. We came here in the first place because we knew we had an asset of some fiscal value and we're wondering if we're getting the educational value out of it. It's really hard to take something that may be binary, like the fiscal value of an asset, and translate it to something that is less binary for a lot of memorial in turn. And that's the, our students and staff getting the value out of that facility that it's worth. Whether it's physical, physical or something else.
And I would just add, the goal would be to get maximum educational value out of it.
Correct. And I think we're all there. So as we think about this, and we have a very cloudy crystal ball of what the future looks like, and that's not going to change. Then the question is, if, are we getting the right value out of the asset, number one? And if, and that's a binary question, I think we can likely answer. And if the answer is yes, then we keep doing what we're doing unless it's going to die, which is one of the problems. And then the second piece is, if the answer is no, what does the educational value look like? And as soon as we have that answer, then we know what we want to do. And the only reason I take the pain to bring this up, and I apologize for being a bit long-winded, is this is a wonderful opportunity, opportunity for us to keep spinning in the big circle and talk about it and talk about it and end up right where we began. But if we define what good looks like, which is the educational value for the asset, it hopefully makes us easier to drive towards a goal, just about. Well, let me add to that, Ron, because although I agree with what you've stated, it's, it devils in the details here. Grace Best is one reason we can't pass the law, because we have an asset that the community wonders why it sits there unused. I know it's used, so don't, you don't have to credit me. But that's a factor that weighs in on that decision process. Now, when you say you find good, that's a broad, I mean, we probably have 6,000 different goods that could be used over there and maximizing its educational value. I mean, our primary educational responsibility is K to 12, as I understand it. And we don't have demographic information to know whether or not 300 seats elementary school would help or would it, what would it do? There's a lot of information we don't have to decide on any of those four options. But I agree most heartily, Ron, that I don't want to talk about it and go nowhere. I, I think it's incumbent on us to make a decision. Now, the question becomes is, what is that good that we think is the right decision?
The only thing I was going to interject, based on the comment around, we don't necessarily have the demographic information. I think maybe where you're going with that is, how do we know what population that might actually serve? I do think, based on our most recent demographic report, we could potentially demonstrate, and this is just one thought about this, I don't want to claim it as necessarily something that we're pushing toward right now. There are several, I would say around about 300 students that are currently being transported from the west side of the interstate over to Bear Creek primarily, give or take. Is that correct, Ron?
That's correct.
So, I just wanted to throw that out there because that is part of a current need that could certainly also be projected into a future need based on the trends that we're also aware of in terms of new builds and construction, et cetera. Keeping in mind that there will be growth at Bear Creek Elementary School at some point down the road. We're not seeing that currently this year. We may not see it next year. Do we see that in three to five years?
Well, all trends support what you just said, because we're having to redistrict. We use the size of District Two because of population. When we look at the schools that they're current attendance, very few practice we vote. So I think it's clear that an elementary school on the west side would make sense. However, that's just one of the four options. What we're not, what I don't really want to do is have another community engagement deliberating process. It ends nowhere.
Thank you for calling that out. I didn't want to call it out exactly in that way, but I do think it's a fair point to mention that the community may come out with us and say, alright, here we go, and to what end?
Yeah.
So, not to say that there isn't value and a timing to how we engage the community, but how we do that is going to be also part of that consideration because.
In fact, that's where I was going.
Certainly.
If we can have a community deliberation, it should be based on what you recommend is, what's our best options for this school system for that property? Instead of this open-ended, what do you think about this, that? It should be a touchy-feely, feel-good kind of discussion. It should be, here's the hard facts. We have the demographics, we have the facility, this is the cost. Here's the alternative, the new building for 30 million or whatever the numbers are. And be forthright, deliberate in our deliberative session. So that's where I think we, the school district, the system, needs to say, well, what is it, what can we propose? And then take that to the community and see where that goes. And I don't like that you have that three or four options. I, I think we need to narrow it down. We are not going to the community desk and what they think. Because you're the professionals. You should know what is the best recommendation based on the dynamics of our neighborhood, our community, and that facility, its potential value, how it relates to the school demographics, et cetera. Come out with a recommendation that's not empty. Certainly. This is what we think we should do. The feedback from the community in my life should be mine too, yeah.
Just in my, in case you repeat that last part, I didn't catch it.
The feedback of the community should lead toward mine too, you're not making your decision. Ron?
I'd, so, I land on three things. I land on A, 100% agree with Ron in terms of just vocalize that our job is to make sure that we are first and foremost ensuring that we are giving our students in our school district the most top-notch education that we can, while also making sure that we are the best fiscal stewards to our community that we can. And when I look at how it might be perceived, I can, I can see one option and redline it personally as one individual and redline continue as is. And I can do that because the community has told us loud and clear, Grace Best sitting as is is a non-starter. And so that's not getting us to what I see as goal A or B. So that's where I land on that. I did have a quick question though. On, and I, it probably makes total sense and I'm just missing it. On slide eight, where it says 2015 CDE report listed site deficiencies at 759915, which included the improvements in mechanical and electrical. And then on number 11, CDE study listed approximately 4.5. I bet it's an easy explanation and I'm just not seeing it.
Those are site deficiencies and then we include all of the upgrades to materials and then, then so we push it up to 4.5 to improve the facility and their study was 4.5, nothing?
So 4.5 includes that?
759.
That's 759, okay.
But I wouldn't pay too much attention to the CDE. It's five years old.
Sure.
The KPE is the one that's most relative.
Sure. I was just curious because I think when we're, when I, the reason that I look at that is, when I look at the bigger picture of KPE, that's why I also asked if KPE include in that all of the, all of the listed ID. The same thing, CDE had deficiencies which added up to 4.5. So I was making sure, did KPE do the same? That was going to be my follow-up question.
KPE was much more thorough.
Okay.
And much more focused on bringing the facility up to standards, up current standards. I do not believe that, from my recollection of reading both reports, is that 2015 never contemplated a fire suppression system?
Gotcha.
KPE study contemplates a fire suppression system for the building, also contemplates asbestos abatement in the building, which the 2015 CDE audit did not.
Oh, okay.
So you've got major differences.
Gotcha.
In, in terms of planning for the future of the facility. KPE study is much more thorough and I would base my numbers, starting numbers on that.
Okay. Which does not include fields, traffic?
Correct.
Fuel removal, proximity of bus park?
All, all of those other issues which are extraneous to the building itself, but are inclusive in actually making it a useful facility as a school. Yes, you have to kind of play a role more than just that.
Right. Devils in the details.
Yes, it is. Anything else? Dr. Summers, what are next steps? What, you guys have, I mean, there's really no recommendation there, right? I mean, just presenting this as status and thoughts about what could be.
Yes. Here's what I'm hearing, and I think what would be helpful is to make sure I have this clarity from the board as a whole. That you are requesting, almost expecting us at some point here in the near future to actually develop more of a definitive, here's the type of facility that we are envisioning Grace Best to become that can serve whatever purpose that we define. And to put more detail, to put more cost, more, all of that in some sort of package that we can bring that forward for additional input. And instead of it being, what do you think we should do? Like if I were to tell you right now, I don't think we should sell that building. I just don't. And the reason I know is because I feel like we, unless we were in dire straits, which we're not at this point, we will have a need for this complex to be part of our forward-facing plan as we go into multiple years in the future. I mean, I've actually asked myself this question, what would a nine as new list do in this current situation? How can we think not only five, 10 years out, how can we think 100 years into the future? To me, it's just too valuable of an asset regardless of all the issues that are involved in it. This is our, this complex, which that was our intentional use of this title, is part of a bigger overarching need that at some point in the near future, maybe not in the first year or this year or next year, and certainly there's pandemic that we're having to work within as well. We need to come up with a more definitive plan and proposal that we can make a pitch to you all and to our community to get that type of feedback as opposed to tell us what you think about, should we, shouldn't we, somewhere in between. So I think we can absolutely take that step. It will take some time for us to put that stuff together. I mean, I'd love to envision something as early as later this month. That's not realistic. I mean, I'd love to envision something as early as later this month, that's not realistic. But the other piece to that is how do we get to that? And I think there's other things that we can breathe into that. So, there isn't just a couple of people in an office figuring all that out, but really embracing all of the potential that is within that facility and then come back with a more detailed set of steps that would be involved in a bigger decision. Ultimately, my goal would be at some point before the end of the school year, we have a better understanding of exactly how we're moving forward. And to your point, not that this is all about some time down the road being able to pass upon, but it is about demonstrating to our community that there's not just a as-is mentality that will take us from now until whenever else. That, I don't think is a good option for us either.
Can I suggest a component that I'd like to see in a proposal moving forward is that... I think that generally, since I've been on the board and actually since I've lived here, the approach of Grace Best has been, we have this, what can we do with it? I think what I would like to see, given you and your team's expertise and level of skill, is why not start at Utopia? Why not start at where can we get the public education system in D38? What can we do here to really create a vision? And as you said, moving forward, that not just best serves our students, but actually raises the educational bar and provides the very best for our students. So, I think that would be an angle I'd like to see. I'm not saying it has anything to do with money or monetary value at this point. Just what, what are the, what's the vision that you and your team could...
So, in other words, think aspirationally.
Yes. And I heard you talk about the future, but the future, moving forward, everything we know about technology and what other educational systems are doing. And because I don't want to, I don't want to just hit average or the bar. You know, I think there, we have a community that supports education at a very high level. And I think if we take a proposal to our community with that in mind, we can get feedback and we can tweak it, but...
Well, I agree with you a hundred percent because that is the whole concept of a comprehensive strategic plan and what we're aiming to become. And then the gap analysis between that, Utopia, and where we are today. So, it fits perfectly with the whole strategic plan concept.
So, I concur with what Teresa said, so I'd like to second that for this reason. We do something, it's an opportunity that we don't have today. I mean, there are lots of needs, whether they're needs from the high schools or the middle school or from special ed or from the elementary community, from outside the community, from seniors and preschool community. And we can't beat them all. But when we start with a clean sheet of paper, sometimes we have the art of the hand versus the order. And this is our chance to take a look at that.
You know, I like what Ron and Teresa said, but what would be helpful for me as one board member is we're kind of putting this together, prioritizing, what is the, in your opinion, what's the greatest efficiency? What's the greatest need for students within the district? And then I think it'd also be helpful, do we have another venue that could serve that need? So, in other words, are we specifically, you know, using this facility just to utilize it? Or is it an effective use of our resources?
And if there, since you're the professionals and we're not, if there is already a way to correlate asset to educational value, we could all use that. That's really what we're talking about here.
So, here's what I can propose at this point. This is great feedback and I think will help drive more of the details of what needs to be involved in the development of a more comprehensive proposal. What I would imagine is that we can take what we've talked about today, put it into a construct of here is our what, our how, and our when, in terms of how we're going to be able to present more of that, more of the steps that we will be taking through this process. I think we can come back later in this month to give you at least an update on an anticipated timeline of deliverables, name what those are, and get some additional feedback at that time. But I think what it helps us do is know that we have permission to move in that direction because if you were to all tell me today, just be done with it, let's get rid of it, that'd be a different type of conversation. And I don't hear that being something that we're really serious about at this point in time. So, back to your point, there's a red line on a couple of those. We've actually done something without maybe knowing exactly. Right, the continued as is and C and C really are not something that we're saying needs to be our driver at this point in time.
We think so, I think so.
Okay, that's helpful. I think that actually takes us a step closer toward where we...
Before we close this, actually, could you go back to Slide, oh, the other one, sorry. Right here, the bottom line there. What are, we didn't really talk that. You're talking about auction, auction, auction?
Yep.
You're talking about selling it?
Right.
The portable.
We make it...
Is there a market for it?
Very miniscule and it may be more of a, the auctioneer, the local auctioneer, and I'm sure success over there had a discussion when we happened to build buses a few months back. He said there may be a market for that to where somebody would take it off your hands and move it out of here. And it may be a, I move it, that's what I'd be for it because it's expensive to move those things.
We have no foreseeable use for that.
We have no foreseeable use for that. There's a heavy repair bill on that. And quite honestly...
I know we're not in a voting meeting, it's just a work session, but generally as one board member, I'd say it's...
I will, I will bring that to you next.
We can include that as a more formal opportunity for action at our October 26 meeting and just allowing you to make a formal motion at that time.
Is there an agreement that we take that in motion?
It might be worth scrap metal to do.
Same with both of them.
So, one other thing before we close this, I would ask that we not take option C on that, although we proceed off the table until we know that that's not a viable option. Because cash in hand is a wonderful, flexible, liquid option. I'm not saying it's the best one, but I'm saying it might not be prudent to take that off the table at this juncture.
One additional option that basically briefly touched on that's not required here is some type of lease agreement, you know, five, 10, 15, 20 years, so you may pay the property. In the interim, we monetize it.
That would be really appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you again.
Well, two exciting discussions down and another one to come here. Refinancing of some general operation thoughts. And at the beginning, I'd like to thank Ron and Shannon for doing some initial discovery work, thinking about this and presenting it to us today.
Am I joined? I'll turn off my mic if this one's on, sorry. I don't need a bug.
No, but if you prefer your headset.
Is this, is this the latest version? Thank you. So, what we have in front of us is a pretty brief presentation that is the summation of a good degree of work that's been done by Shannon, myself, and the folks at our bonding company. And it represents a wonderful opportunity that we think should be considered strongly by the board. We'll walk you through it. And there are, at about Slide Four, there's a series of FAQs that may answer several questions. So, unless I'm sort of really pressing, we'll ask, I just would wait until that because it may be covered and that's okay. So, the simple fact is we're in some interesting and unprecedented money supply times. As most of us know, interest rates are significantly lower than they've ever been in any of our lifetimes. And henceforth, it represents an opportunity. We carry a little bit in excess of 23 million in public debt. And I believe all of it ends in eight to nine years. A good degree of that is available to be refinanced. The actual term that the folks in this business use it is called refunding, but we chose to use refinancing for this presentation because some people consider refunding actually having somebody give you money back. And our fiduciary responsibility as board members is to vet these options and would attempt to do that. So, what's the opportunity in front of us? To refinance or refund these bonds? In its simplest form, puts money back in our taxpayers, our constituents, or our owners' pockets. And the sum total of doing that would be at a minimum 1.7 million and in a perfect state, about 3.3 million over the course of these bonds. It also guarantees there's no negative impact to the operations of the district, the staff, and the students. And it's completely cash flow neutral to the district. And again, positive to the taxpayers. It also answers one of the asks of some of our constituents, which is how do we increase our fiduciary transparency? Looking at something like this does so. So, to attempt to net this out with a single slide, what does it really do operationally, physically? So, we make variable payments on this debt and they will be reduced. And all those revenues come from local taxes. And if we move on this option, the new revenues will reflect, excuse me, will reflect the interest rate and our payments will be lower. And that reduction is, as the title should be, about 1.3 to about 3.3, really based on when we might lock in on new funding. The specific impact to our taxpayer community is that bills will be reduced. And our bond rating will stay the same. By the way, we have a really strong bond rating. We vetted with several people what it would take to increase it. And it's, it's not impossible, it's very, very, very hard to do because we're so high. And maybe most telling to people that have gotten vehicle loans or home loans is we're taking, this transaction would give us a very, very significant reduction in our lending costs. We're currently at an excellent rate of 3.5%. And we would move that down by nearly two-thirds to 1.5%. And henceforth, that's the savings. So, a couple FAQs and then if we miss something, please bring it forward. First one is, can we take this money and use it for something else? And the answer is no. When these bonds are issued, they have a specific set of rules around them and all proceeds from refinancing or refunding goes back to the owners or the taxpayers. Is there a fee? Yes, there are several fees. The sum total of those is approximately $211,400, which represents about a 700% return based on the savings. To physically conduct the transaction, there's a bit of work and that takes approximately eight to 12 weeks. And there is some staff work associated with it. It's about six weeks of work to prepare an operating statement that's very similar to what we might commonly refer to as a prospectus. Some of us might consider, well, if we're going to do this, is this a good time to be offered a new public debt or bonds? And the answer is yes, the market's very strong. It's about a nine or an eight on a 10 scale. And because of our rating, we're an attractive borrower. So, based on everybody we've spoken with, it's a good time to be doing this if you're going to do it. Secondly, have we done a degree of diligence in vetting this? And humbly said, we believe the answer to be yes. We spoke with multiple funding experts from different entities. We spoke with CEO of publicly traded companies, statements, company public and private again. We spoke with the executive team here. We've spoken with public company executives, excuse me, publicly traded company other executives. We've also looked at credit placements. In other words, is there a way to simply go to a bank and say, why don't you lend us this money for less than we're paying for it today? And so far, this is the best alternative. I think there's one more FAQ, probably a little bit. And if we're the taxpayers, when do we get our money? That's a fair question because it's their money and their schools. And the answer is, if we move swiftly, it'll be in the next tax bill coming in February 2021. Before I go any further, I'm going to guess we may have missed a frequently thought of or frequently asked question. Right. So, there's some mechanics involved in getting this done. And oftentimes, people will look at this kind of thing and say, well, that's easy to say but very hard to do. So, here's the mechanics. We as a board make a decision to do this and we pass a resolution to do it. The staff prepares the preliminary official statement, again, very similar to the prospectus. Once that is completed, we pass an additional resolution to market bonds. Legal counsel prepares all the official documentation to do so in the spirit that protects taxpayers of the district, which can be parallel to the other efforts. And then Hilltop and District 38 selects an underwriter, which we went through that process already, selected Royal Bank of Canada, I think in 2018 if I remember correctly. And that process begins? Thoughts, questions, service?
Thank you for answering my question, but for clarification, how does money would be returned to taxpayers as they would see a reduction in their tax bill they have coming here?
That's correct. And they see it every year until the bonds are paid off in 2029?
Is there a way to know about how much they would be saving on their tax bill?
Well, at today's rate, if we moved immediately, the district as a whole would save 1.7. So, we'd have to divide that by the tax bidders.
And not including residential as well as...
As well as business.
Yeah, and so, we have that and commercial, property, as well as residential.
So, I'll add to that. When we set the loan levies in December, that's when this would be recognized. If we did this into December, we set the loan levy and that affects the subsequent year. So, that's when it would be, it would be in next year's tax bill. So, the deadline, that's a short window here.
Right.
To try and get it in, we have to have it done before the middle of December at least.
So, we walked through the... Yeah, apologies for that. We walked through the timelines, it's very doable. We do have to execute, but it's, if we agree it's something that's the right thing to do for our constituents, owners, and taxpayers, then we're in a position to do it. And those to the district, we're getting ahead of it instead of behind it when we first reviewed this a couple of weeks ago. Their capacity to execute swiftly is impressive.
So, Ron, a question for you is...
So Ron, a question for you is, when we refinance, can we refinance with a shorter term rather than a lower payment?
So we haven't looked at that because we've tried to just maximize the savings. But I have to go back to the financing capital company and see if there's a way to do it for a shorter term.
And on one hand, shorter term means no money back. It's no levy with bond, stayed the same, or same payment rate. Versus giving us all amount of money versus paying it off early.
So?
I don't know how much earlier it might pay off.
Yeah. My gut, my, we can look at it. My gut would be, it's not significant, but rather than take a swag at it, let's, we'll ask that question. Fair question.
So thank you for the presentation. I think this was well done. You've done a great job in your capacity, Ron. I need to wonder if the microphone is working. All right, so I'll still speak. My only concern is, based on some challenges the board has had in the past, I feel strongly that we need to do our due diligence. No doubt you've already done it, but I think this is information that the board wants to move forward, that we need to get out to the community and do our best job vetting it. At times, there's unforeseen consequences, and I'm not a bond expert. But now if we do move forward, let's just, I want to make sure that we're very methodical and we just don't do it and get it done. That would be my only concern.
Can you speak to due diligence with the community?
Due diligence with the community? Ron just mentioned that he's already consulted with several experts. I don't know that it would hurt to consult with more. But the board has done things in the past that have been some missteps, and I just want to make sure that we don't repeat those mistakes.
So I wonder if there's a way we could do this work simultaneously or simultaneously so we don't miss out on the opportunity as well?
Well, nothing that I said is intended to delay the process.
Right, exactly.
Frankly, after, I think we have a consensus of the board, if that's the direction we want to go. And start getting, disseminating this information to public. At one point, we had a committee with several financial experts on board, bankers, et cetera. Perhaps they would be one of the first groups that we want to take this information to.
The audit committee? Is that who you're referring to? The audit committee?
The audit committee, and there was another committee at one point. I'm not sure if still in place where we had a series of local business experts and professionals. But occasionally, the superintendent would have lunch with and consult with and so forth.
When, I have a question. When could we get interest rates locked in? How far out?
First opportunity for us to finish the U.S. would be around November 15. Matt, I think you have the timeline right. I didn't make the copy there.
Yes.
And so, once that's done, then you really have an opportunity to move forward. So that gives us a month to work in parallel with vetting of the public and finding out if maybe there's even better way to do this. I don't think any of us is in a position, I'm not trying to save incremental money, but we're all in a position of not trying to let something slip between our fingers while we're doing it. So having said that, November 15 is the date. That gives us an excess of a month. We can all work in parallel. And if the current way to do it is the most prudent way for the district and our stakeholders before we do it, and that would really put us in a position to have everything done prior to 1215, which, as Chris said, is the magic date.
So listening to you and Matt, vetting with the public includes what specifics? And maybe it's not the answer for either of you to address, but what would be your recommendation in terms of vetting this with the public?
So I can share that our first step was going to provide a summary, detailed summary, of the fact that we're just having this conversation, that we're investigating what the terms are, and doing our due diligence to understand what that consists of. In terms of gathering feedback, my sense is that anyone that has an interest in sharing what their perspective is on this, they will make themselves known through typical channels, whether that's email, or we have a board meeting, obviously, on the 26th. We have ways to gather that information. So alluding to the committee that Mr. Klaassen was suggesting, where my mind went was initially our audit committee as well. So I think we can certainly incorporate their feedback based on a description of where we're at in this process. But based on all of what we're noticing in the steps that will be taken to produce the terms of a new bond structure, I think we'll have, we'll have time on our side to be able to make sure that that is available to the community and that we'll have a feedback process. But I don't know that it's going to provide ample length of time. I guess, how am I trying to say this? It really is going to be dependent on how we're moving through these steps because it will move pretty quickly. If there's a desire to slow that down, then I think we miss out on the opportunity. I probably said that very eloquently, but.
I hear that. I also want to take to heart Matt's point, which is, if I'm understanding it correctly, that in our community, there have been missteps in terms of timing. And if we need to move in step with their understanding, or at least from our perspective, communicate very, very diligently and very clearly what we're doing and why and how, and provide those opportunities for feedback as we move along in that process, whether it's a six-week process or a six-month process. I'm not proposing it to be six months. I'm saying, I'm open with, you know, as one board member, moving forward and getting this ball rolling. But, and maintaining that momentum. But I, I just, I'm very, an important act of that is to communicate really clearly with our community.
Yeah, I think the key in that is going to be how detailed this information is in sharing exactly what we are wanting the community to be informed of, and then affording them the opportunity to provide feedback. I don't want to overcomplicate that either.
Right. I was just about to say, let's simplify this a bit. Because really, I don't know how many people refinance their loans because of the interest rates being one or two percentage lower. And did you read the entire part? Did you read all those papers you had assigned? I don't think that matters, frankly. I think the prospectus, that's legal keys, if you will. It has to be done. It has to be approved. Our attorney has to approve it. Really, all we're saying in my mind is, we want to get a lower interest rate to do one of two things. Pay the bonds off sooner, or reduce the levies so the taxpayers don't pay as much every year. Other than that, is there a choice? Or I guess the third choice is just do nothing. It does the best thing. Do it better.
I concur to an extent, Chris. Bonds are a little more complicated to than a mortgage, and there's a few more variables. And my client can, once again, it's not to slow down, but there's a lot of very well-educated individuals in this community. And if they can see or have different perspectives than I do or you, that provide a better deal, so to speak, for our constituents, that's kind of what I'm asking for.
The best deal we can get on both boards. And it is more complicated because it's a public thing. I get that, but I didn't have to hire an attorney to do my work.
The next, next question I have for you, our next board meeting isn't on the 19th?
It's actually October 26th.
October 26th. So traditionally, for resolutions, we've had two readings. Is there any thought of maybe having another special board meeting to have the first reading of this resolution and make sure that we get it out to the community sooner or later? Just a thought.
It's a good thought. And I would, if we were going to do that, my suggestion would be to hold it after the 26th so that we'll have the details. I mean, they have to look forward to get the details and share. Right now, I don't even know the impact.
Is this on? Okay. Can I interject some detail here? So the timeline that we're looking at, if you're talking about the resolution of the board approving the POS, that's not going to be available until the November board meeting is what we're aiming for. And really, that is what the board would need to approve. That's going to have all of the guidelines in which we can do this refinancing slash refunding. So until then, we're just kind of moving forward, continuing to gather all the information. And we can certainly ask the questions that have been posed here today. And just to clarify or reiterate what Ron presented is that all the fees, the $211,000, that's everything that it will cost to do this process. And it'll be rolled into the refunding as well. So we can certainly get feedback as we go if we want to bring in the audit committee and have them look at it. But this is the previous refunding POS that was done back in, I don't know, 2012. Yeah, so this is the 2012 B series that we're referring to right now. It's 150 pages. So probably not going to have a whole ton of people who look at this much detail. There's a lot in there. The CAFR is included in that as well. But we can certainly run this by, you know, a summarized version run by the appropriate people. That includes the audit committee, et cetera, to get more feedback, absolutely. I just wanted to be clear that something like this, that you, that the board will need to do a resolution to approve, won't be available until the November meeting. So just so everybody's on the same page there.
So that raises the question I had is, is this required two readings?
Well, I don't know that it necessarily does, but traditionally, the board is trying to have two readings for any resolution just to make sure we have ample amount of time for public input.
So is it possible we can have a resolution on the 26th? It just connects a superintendent to do a survey of the community of, do you want to pay off early? Or do you want a lower payment? Because that's really the only options that come out of this.
And my reaction to that is, I don't know that any of those actions really require resolution. So why I say that is because really, the only thing that you would be changing our course on would be the approval of the terms once they're finalized and once they're presented. Really, a resolution previous to that is more or less saying you just want us to investigate it appropriately and get input. I don't know that that is really something that involves official board action. Because we can certainly acknowledge right now that we want input and that we want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence in presenting all of the information to you prior to taking an official vote.
Well, I agree with you. You're talking about just the resolution approving a new bond, terms and conditions.
And that, again, will come through what Shannon just described. So I think there made that initial bullet that was on that last slide was under more heading of, do you agree that we should at least move forward in the manner that we've described to produce all of the information in terms of the new terms and make sure that we are forwarding community feedback on that? And again, I just don't know that that actually requires a formal resolution with the board.
And I'll ask this question then. The net payment reduction is 1.4 to 3.3. Is that after you pay the fees?
Yes, everything is net fees. And I went through it again late last night in wonderful detail. The adjective I was first thinking of.
So really, for the word's sake, what we're really asking ourselves is, do we want to continue down the path, right?
That's correct. All those in favor say aye.
Can I ask one point of clarity that I've thought of since we last talked? The fees of 211,000, is Hilltop retained in a general sense? Or do we pay them also extra to do?
My understanding is yes, yes.
So is Hilltop's cost enrolled in that 211,000?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
As well as an attorney specific to this, as well as an escrow company, as well as Royal Bank of Canada, or whoever the underwriter is. And I think there are three or four other, I caution to say miscellaneous items that go into that.
So we don't expect any other fees?
That's correct.
Unless something's been overlooked.
That's what I went through in Ozzy very late last night with Addy from Hilltop.
So, again, I'm, I used to, so let's assume for a minute that we approve this. It gets finalized in November, and we say, pass the resolution, yes. And then they price it, it's a reverse or whatever. From the time they price it, and the time it's funded, and you paid off the old bond, what kind of timeframe is that?
It's two weeks. I went through that also last night. But that's all incorporated in the eight to 12 week.
So it's all built in?
Yeah, for a certain, yes.
So then taxpayers, we pay in February and May, or one time, or whatever those numbers are. All of those payments and receipts would be affected by this action?
Yeah, that's, that's why we put that as that one bullet, right? So is it, again, it's an opportunity, it's, to Matt's point, we have a month now to vet it with others to make sure we're not missing something. But it's a rare opportunity for us to do what our community is asking us to do and has been asking us to do for many, many years. Be good fiduciaries. And when there's opportunity, do the right thing.
But this bond that we're talking about settling is a more than a long, right?
I believe so, yes.
It was likely already refinanced once down to 3.5%, which again is a quality interest rate. It's just we're in unprecedented times.
Mr. Taylor, I just want to make sure I understood you correctly. What we're talking about today is a consensus of the board, and we will actually approve it at a later time, as I said.
That's correct. We're just, this work has been ongoing just because of the leadership of our treasurer and our assistant treasurer looking at it and saying, fiduciarily, we should do something. So they're bringing it to us for that conversation. Today, we just are essentially saying, yes, keep going. And hopefully by November, we'll have a vote. And in the meantime, do the due diligence professionally and with the community to make sure that, you know, we don't have missteps, like you said.
To me, this makes absolute sense to continue forward with this because this, this is exactly, goes to the point of what I was saying, being good stewards to our community, saving the district money and saving our community money seems like a win-win. And to your point, Mr. Klaassen, making sure we're doing this and not ending up with unintended consequences of that path, you know, the path of good intentions. But I don't see this as a, I don't see any negativity or reason to stop.
Excellent. Thank you so very much. So we're, we're doing a little different this week. So instead of board member comments first, we're going to hear Dr. Summers give us an update, and then we'll have board member comments thereafter. Dr. Summers?
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. So I'm going to use this time within the update to provide more of the COVID response update. Two essential items, one that will appear in public content, one that I will just read through right now. So I wanted to start from a place of our numbers. Currently, since August 12th of 2020, we have had 18 total positive slash probable COVID cases that we are aware of. That involves four staff and 14 students. At present, meaning today, we currently have 26 staff members and just over 200 students who are currently quarantined due to exposures. We have had, over the past week, a few different cases. And these have involved now active quarantines currently at Lewis Palmer High School, Lewis Palmer Middle School, and Bear Creek Elementary School. The fact that our previous quarantine impact has also had a sum up numbers, we want to make sure that we are providing that additional information so that we can factually describe what the impact has been in terms of those numbers for our community. So that should be shared on our website here in the, in the next few days.
Good question on those stats.
Sure.
Do you have, have there been any hospitalizations?
To our knowledge, I don't believe we are aware of any known hospitalizations. The other thing I would point out is that that number is not comprehensive or does not include students or staff members that are currently. not include students or staff members that are currently at home for either a 10-day illness isolation that is not COVID probable or positive. That also does not include numbers of individuals who may be quarantined as a result of exposure to a family member or somebody that's not in our system that requires that level of quarantine. So there's a lot going on to all of that. Point being, and this is, I think, really important to mention, that we acknowledge that there's continuing to be an impact and disruption to our learning and our work environment and that the situation continues to be pervasive and persistent. I did want to share with you that last Thursday and Friday, I had the opportunity to visit our staff at our middle school and our high schools. First and foremost, just to acknowledge and appreciate their efforts and how diligently they are working under these extraordinary circumstances. Also working to better learn from our successes and our challenges. As I mentioned at our last board meeting in September, one of the things that is bubbling up as a conversation or a talking point is the potential at some point down the road for a return to 100% in learning at the secondary level. We launched this conversation with our staff and so it was presented as a very open-ended question to each of our staff members at those sites and then as well to our broader district staff. But essentially, what do you need to feel confident and prepared for a return to 100% in-person learning at the secondary level? Keep in mind, I had this conversation prior to a few more cases and quarantines. So it's a moving and relative target in terms of the input that we're gathering, but we are still keeping that question open and collecting those responses. I would just tell you, based on a quick review, and this is a very brief summary, not at all intended to be comprehensive, but it's all over the place. We are getting several comments about, we won't be ready until a vaccine is, is ready and available within the community. We have some staff that are saying, we are ready now. We are saying, we are hearing from staff who are saying it will take time to prepare for that type of a shift. We did talk about the potential of a second semester start date, but there was also a lot of acknowledgement that a lot can happen between now and then. We're still sitting in October with November and December to come. There's definitely a lot of concerns about workload, health impacts, stress, et cetera, more from a staff point of view. And I would tell you that the hybrid schedule also has mixed reviews and many of you already know that this is something that we are still learning and adapting to as we go. Those flexibilities do create some opportunities within the schedule, but there's also recognition that there's limited teacher and student contact time, may not be the most ideal learning environment. Certainly, we have students that we know are struggling, so there's just a lot that goes into all of that. I would say, in terms of some next steps, one of the questions would be thinking about how we best can incorporate, gather and incorporate student and family voice as well into this conversation. But I also want to be careful not to mislead our community. So if we ask that question, that may be interpreted as motivation for pursuing a full-blown return prior to us being quote unquote, ready. So I think we just have to be mindful of how we're framing that conversation and input. And I think we would probably anticipate that we're going to see something consistent based on what we're also seeing from staff. There are certainly people that would want to come back right away, others that would say, that's way too much and we're putting ourselves into a real challenging position at that point. As an interesting side up to the same conversation, we had a recent meeting with representatives from the health department and their advice on the topic essentially was, quote unquote, it would be really difficult to do the 100% return right now. And so certainly, we can make the case that the 50% attendance every other day is ensure that we don't have as widespread of an impact in the event of a positive case and who needs to quarantine. But on the flip side, making sure that we are attuning to the fact that our students and our families definitely deserve to have this information and to be thinking about it is something that we just want to make sure that we're balancing out. So just a lot more to consider with respect to that bigger topic. I did want to elevate a couple of other things, one being that the middle school has made a decision to move toward, they'll continue with the hybrid schedule, but they're going to move from a block schedule, a four-block schedule every day, to a Patriot Day, which essentially has every block every day. So that will increase the teacher-student contact time while still keeping the 50% in attendance model intact. We had some really good feedback on that, both from our staff and our families. This will be a transition week next week and then beginning of the week of October 20th, that will be a full-blown Patriot Day schedule at the middle.
Can I ask a question then?
Sure.
So essentially, students would have twice as many interactions with teachers per week?
Yes, okay, that's correct.
Dr. Summers, if I may, if I address for a moment, you mentioned your interactions with the health department, they do not foresee being able to part kids to return that 100%? Did they explain that? Is that based on what's going on in El Paso County or projections?
Yes, and so currently, the El Paso County Health numbers, if you guys look at those data dashboards, it just today, I believe, went over the 75 per 100,000 threshold over a 14-day period of time, which is just a fancy way of saying that we have an uptick and that that uptick may actually shift our status. We're currently in the safer-at-home level one status according to the COVID dial. Depending on how long that trend maintains, that may push us from a level one into a level two, safer at home, which means we're actually going backwards a little bit. Level three being like the most severe aspect of the safer at home and then all the way back to safe at home. While I don't know that we're going to necessarily be back to that level on the dial any time soon, although again, we're still very early in the fall in terms of what that overall impact could be. So I think that's a piece of it, Mr. Clausen. I think the other piece that they certainly are mindful of is just going from class sizes of right now are averaging anywhere from 12 to 14 per secondary level classes to now you have 26 to 30 kids in a classroom, making it difficult, more difficult to socially distance, meaning that if we did have a positive case in one of those classes, you're almost doubling the number of people that could be quarantined at that time. So in my terminology that I was using in reflecting on what they were saying, it's, we're nowhere close to being out of the woods yet. We just have a long way to still go. The other thing that they brought up is it will take a substantial amount of time. I asked a question of how long are we going to be dealing with this? And almost in unison, they answered two years, meaning they are looking at until a vaccine is available and distributed widely across the community, we're probably going to be dealing with maybe not this degree of everything that we have to deal with, with our schedules and all the health and safety guidelines. But my interpretation again was, so we're really nowhere closer than where we were when we started. And they answered with, we're still learning so much as we continue to go. We've only really been seven months into this thing, which I know feels like an eternity in some ways, and then in other ways, we're still at the very early stages of understanding all of the different dynamics, particularly as we're looking at how this impacts us within the school environment. So I know that was a big answer to that, addressed most of what you were.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron?
Just to follow to that, first of all, thank you, Mr. Clausen. That was exactly my question as well. What is the relationship with the county health department and state? And how, how does that all function? You sort of answered the next natural question, Mr. Clausen's, which is, where is the leveling offer tipping point to where there's an opportunity to return back to traditional schedules? But is, is the county semi-autonomous, completely autonomous, lockstep with the state? How does that function and do you even know?
My best answer to that is CD-PHE, Department of Public Health and Environment, in collaboration with the governor's office and the executive arm of state government, really set the table for all counties in terms of, here is what our bigger landscape of response to COVID is within Colorado. Because the numbers vary from county to county, there is definitely a recognition and an allowance for flexibility among those counties. So I would, I would say there's some semi-autonomy to that. But in terms of the guidelines themselves and how they're set, meaning how do we treat close contacts? At what point in our phase of where the county's status currently is, are we able to apply different guidance? All of that is coming from the state level and the county is expected to implement that unless we can demonstrate that our numbers are such that we can apply for variance. So that variance process, as an example, was leveraged by El Paso County as recent as, or as far back to when we were able to make the case that our in-person graduations should happen the way that they could happen. So that was one example of the county applying to the state for that level of variance, being approved that variance, and then being able to do something different than what other counties and state were doing at the time. So I think it depends on those contexts, but I also think CD-PHE is still the driving agent, if you will, and every county health department then has to more or less ensure that we are following those guidelines. And then any adjustments that are made are coming from the data that lives within those prospective local communities. Did that answer that?
Yes, essentially, it sounds like it's an 80/20 model, right? There's 80%, it's pretty much fixed and based on where you are or you can figure edges.
I think that's a, more or less, that's a fair depiction of what's currently happening.
Thank you.
Where was I? Oh, I'd just be remiss if I didn't mention that our COVID response team, primarily through Rick Frampton, and now we're including one of our nurses, Stacy Pierce, in terms of our contact tracing efforts. In collaboration with school administrators, our exec team, as well as all the nurses in each of our campuses, they're just doing a phenomenal, phenomenal job. It's a 24/7 job, it feels like right now. There's constantly moving parts that are taking place, but all that communication and follow-through, the team is just doing fantastic. I would also add that the health department is very complimentary of those efforts, not to say that we're necessarily quote unquote, doing it better than others, but I think we're doing it extremely well. They're very confident every time that we have had interactions in the steps that we're taking and how decisions are being made. The only other thing that I wanted to make sure that we did spend a moment talking about, the topic of snow days. And I know that we had more of a loose conversation about this several weeks back because we know that we do have distance learning as a platform available to us. I think in maybe some informal dialogue, there was a comment such as, hey, well, we really don't need a snow day anymore because we can do distance learning. And what I can tell you, based on two variables, one is our investigation and study into our instructional minutes that we are required to demonstrate in alignment with state expectations, two being just conversations with staff in terms of the doability or manageability of a distance learning platform on a particular snow day. What you see built into this agenda is a summary, both for elementary and secondary, and I'll just try to whittle it down into this. Essentially, at this point, we are not recommending that we automatically institute a distance learning day for snow days unless and only unless there is a need to recover those instructional days and minutes. So in the event that we are monitoring those minutes over the course of the year and we see a significant difference, where we would at that point say, hey, we need to refine time somewhere here, we do not anticipate that our snow days will currently have to be utilized as distance learning days. There's other pieces that go into that, but that is really essentially our, not only our recommendation, but everything that we have looked at, we believe that we're confident in the fact that we will not only meet instructional minutes, but that it will create really some manageability and undue expectations that we're not prepared to completely embrace as a system at this point in time. And I have Dr. Benton here, obviously, to be able to weigh in on more of that if you guys would like additional information, but that is based on our study to date and where we sit as we go into some of the cold weather months here.
I have some questions. I can understand why we would not want to, got a lot on our plate dealing with back and forth and online versus hybrid versus in-person, so it makes sense to me that I don't see any reason to, to throw another spoke in the wheel right now. Curious, do we know how districts such as District 49 was able to implement that before, prior to our current COVID situation?
So I'll take a stab at it and Dr. Benton can certainly back me up on this. They went through a very robust application process to be identified as a district that is capable of implementing e-learning. I don't believe that is the entire district that that e-learning applies toward, that is just a specific sector of their district. It involves making sure that every student within that sector has access to technology, access to internet and in bandwidth, and that ultimately, it becomes something that is seamless so that there's not a huge ripple effect to an individual student being at home on that particular day. And again, they went through a state board of education proposal, application, presentation, and approval to be counted as a district that can leverage e-learning. The reason why we could even entertain this option for this year is because the rules at the CDE level have shifted to allow us to count days and minutes, both in-person as well as distance. So we are still in the process where we can leverage that model. It's not a requirement, though, that we necessarily have to prescribe any snow day that we're currently using as a distance learning day in that situation. How'd I do?
It just seemed like it'd be difficult, especially on teachers. If you're in the building, you expect to be in the building the next day, you don't necessarily have all your materials ready and geared up to go for a day learning day on a snow day. So that's why I was curious on the whole, how they implemented it, and it seemed like it'd be a plan, but I didn't know how they did it. And I didn't know it was only one district or one.
Yeah, I think it's their Falcon Zone. That's a more appropriate terminology.
It's one zone and they did use quite the process, including community input, to be able to apply to that. And so that's something that we're not able to actually get.
Thanks. I have one more question for you, Dr. Summers.
Okay. Dr. Benton off the hook.
When you'd originally mentioned that we have 18 total positive slash probable, can you distinguish the difference? I think I understand, but I get asked that a lot, the difference between positive and probable. That's probably the biggest question I get fielded.
So a positive case is where we have a confirmed positive test result. A probable case is involving typically, and there may be some variations to this, but generally speaking, we're dealing with an individual who we know has been exposed to a confirmed positive case. In most cases, this is a family member and is displaying symptoms, typically symptoms that are major in origin. So for example, loss of taste or smell, that's a big one. Extended fever over a multiple-day window. Individuals that we know, if, if they were to tell us, well, I haven't tested positive, but we know that they have been exposed to that positive case and we know that they have symptomology, that is a probable case at that point.
Do we upgrade when we have a probable case, when if the test comes back negative or positive, do we upgrade or downgrade that status?
Not from a practical standpoint in terms of, they are still either going to be isolated or quarantined depending on the way that that symptomology is being presented. So there really is no downgrading at that point. If you're probable, you're probable and you're out the 10 days and then we establish a return date and we go from there.
And then my only other question, that my last question is, in terms of long-term, we're looking at where we are with, in complying with county and numbers, I can't remember, do we have an update on how many deaths there's been in El Paso County? Does deaths versus the cases, confirmed cases affect the designation?
By designation, I assume you're referring to.
Stay at home, protect your neighbor.
I don't believe deaths necessarily play into the. I don't believe deaths necessarily play into the mark around the status of what phase we're in.
Gotcha.
But as I pull up the El Paso County website information here, there have been to date, from March 1st through October 6th, so keep in mind that you can adjust that timeline window, there have been 7,291 confirmed cases in El Paso County, 595 hospitalizations, and 182 deaths.
Within the last two weeks? I thought they did it on a 14-day window.
You can adjust that, I'm doing that right now, and I believe that would be September, what is it, 23rd? Give it a take. Looks like 22 hospitalizations and two deaths at that point. So it fluctuates, obviously, as you move that timeline backward and forward. My understanding is that a big part of the data is the number of incidences per 100,000 over 14 days, the positivity rate, which I think our positivity rate is hovering in the 2.5% to 3% kind of range. Something else I'm missing on that? And the hospitalization bed capacity.
Thanks.
Yep.
I was curious how they determine that.
Can't remember.
Dr. Summers?
Sir?
Is there any data when we go through the contact tracing piece about, I'll use the term ripple effect or ancillary positive cases as a result of activities in school with respect to the fact that a lot of people that test positive in the school may have received their infection through contact outside of the school? But my point is, is there a ripple effect in homes and the families and et cetera?
By ripple effect, are you asking if there's then cases as a result of...
Yes.
Another case? And to what extent we're seeing that as a result of things that have occurred within the school?
Yeah, is there even a way to measure it? If so, what have we learned?
I would say those are built into our ongoing conversations with El Paso County Health. Oftentimes, there'll be a conversation around with the Health Department, okay, going back to understanding where the initial individual may have been exposed and other people that may have been exposed. Most of what we've seen up to this point are family member exposures that have induced additional spread, not school-based exposures that are inducing additional spread. There is one confirmed outbreak that meets the technical definition of outbreak that has occurred within our schools. To date, that is the only one that we are aware of as we've had that discussion with El Paso County Health. I could go one further step to say, we are not in the business of naming when it's an outbreak. They will tell us when it meets that definition. Anything else you'd add up?
Thanks.
Thank you.
And that was it?
Sure. Thank you.
Curious if we can start with you today and then work toward your own?
Sure, I don't have much to say. But I would extend my thanks to Casey for inviting us to the K-12 leadership meeting at LPMS on Friday. Tiffany and I were both there, and I'm still thinking about a few pieces of that, so thanks for the invitation.
Thank you.
I don't have much to say either. I was going to mirror what Mrs. Phillips said. The K-12 leadership meeting at the middle school is... It left me with some so what now lets and some thoughts to process through. And I've attended a couple webinars lately put on by the National Association of School Boards on topics such as what does academic education look like? To how do we help our kids get through the feeling of hopelessness and fear going through? And through all of this discussion of topic, and what my heart goes to right now is, most of us sitting on this board are not just board members. We're community members, we're professionals, we have children that are going through this also. And it is hard, it's hard. But I think we have to be brave enough to say, I don't know. And it seems like we hear a lot of wanting absolute definitive answers. And I think it's okay to say, I don't know, because this isn't something that any of us in our lifetimes have had to navigate. It does break my heart that my own child has peers that are in quarantine by no fault of their own, just because they have the luck of being in a classroom where they have to be quarantined. So they get to see their peers out on the practice fields and going to Sonic to grab a milkshake, whereas they are staying at home. And so that does have an impact on our kids and our families. So I think this is the time when, this isn't something we get to control. I wish it was, but what can we do to be more supportive and loving and leaning in? And acknowledging that, I know it seems cliche to say it, but truly, we are all in this together. We're all feeling the impacts of this. And I don't mean, I feel like I'm being doom and gloom, I don't mean to be. It's just maybe it's the COVID fatigue worrying on my mind, my heart as well. But I still think through all of this, there is a lot of really cool things going on in our school district still. And if you just look at the silver lining and the brightness of, we get to what Ron presented just this afternoon is a prime example of the opportunity to be good stewards to our community. And I think that that is part of what we're here for, is to make sure that our kids are still receiving their top-notch education, that we're being supportive to our staff the best, and doing the best we can, and being good stewards for our community. So I just, through all of this, I think it's important that we stay focused on what is our role and what is our goal. Gotcha.
Do you have any comments?
I think the team's heard enough from Mr. Schwartz.
But we appreciate what we heard.
There's a, you know, you made a comment, Dr. Summers, that county health says this could be two years or longer. Well, it could be for the rest of our lives, and all right, the county, this virus may never, ever, ever go away. And as data presents itself every day, I would be as concerned about therapeutics, how do we treat ourselves, should we get the COVID virus? As I would be about a vaccine that might prevent it, because in some cases, vaccines may have consequences. My point, man, is this, how do we, as a school district, hold the county Health Department accountable? How current are they, using current data, current known therapies? The whole 14-day, is that forever? I'm really full of questions, and I have no answers for. I have no opinions about, but let's just assume for a minute that they're right, this is here to stay. And if it's here to stay, then what do we do? What can they do, I should say, because they're the Health Department? What can they do to help our school district, one, with more rapid response testing? I know it's available, because in the world today, there is rapid response testing available. What are we as a school district, or CDE, or through the federal government? What are we doing about giving more rapid result testing? Because that's crucial, treatment, prevention, to control it. And then two is, what do we know about therapies? Because obviously, they're learning something in this process. How current are we with health therapies that work? And then the last point I would make, they say there's over 10,000 COVID deaths. They also say that many of those deaths were, were in complete sort of condition already that the COVID may have been triggered, but the actual death itself was as a result of some issue they already had. I don't know how, again, I don't know the answer. I just, I read, I try and explore and learn all I can. But this whole concept of us all wearing masks while we're all in social business seems extreme to me. Me personally. Now, anyone might say, well, that's because you have the virus, right? Well, I have two friends, they're my age, they're all couples, that both got the virus, and they both survived. And in fact, if we look at the data, the death rate is lower than the positivity rate. So yeah, we're getting 2.5%, 3% positivity rate for all the tests that were taken. The death rate is less than that by far. And at some point in time, we all will come to grips with data, current information, and we have to start saying, what's best for this school system? And I can guarantee you, from my experience, homeschooling every other day is difficult. And I'm not talking about mom and dad. I have a wife as a teacher, and it's tough enough on her, but it's difficult on these kids. So I have no doubt in my mind that we do not have measures in place that is measuring the effect of this new model as it relates to this whole school. We will in time. Unfortunately, last year ended poorly, this year's going to be worse. And these children are being, I don't know how to say it, except, you know, they got the short end of the stick. Because this isn't the kind of quality education that they deserve. But it isn't their fault, it isn't the school system's fault, it's the circumstance. But I don't know, I can't describe it any other way. What I will be gradually used for at your administration in this school district is you gave choice, you opened as soon as you could. You've done everything possible within the constraints that have been placed on you. What I'm really talking about now is how do I communicate with the county Health? How do I go down there and say, hey, wait a minute? I want to get some answers, because we get plenty of emails saying we're doing everything wrong, regardless of what they think is right. The point I would make is how do we communicate, you know, to the 80% that's sort of fixed at the state level or the county level to express or to request information about, you know, what are they doing to serve us? I think they're all on the taxpayer dollar, they're being paid by the taxpayers. I think they owe us something, and I think it's more than what we're getting personally. Because I heard no update on standards, and I, based on your comment of, well, it might be a couple years, we can't go that way, in my opinion. As one more member, one father, this is not sustainable for the health of our children. I don't know what the answers are. I'm not suggesting I know what the answers are. I'm just saying that what I've seen, what I'm observing, what I'm experiencing, this is not sustainable. And I don't think I, I'm not trying to convince of it, it's my opinion, in my opinion only. But I really think somehow we need to have a way to communicate upward, if you will, to the state, the authorities who put the constraints on us. How do we get these answers? Because I am concerned that it's, the training effect is going to be compounded over time. Dr. Summers, I love the job you did, I really do, and I have more empathy than you can even imagine. Fantastic job. And I appreciate, most of all, your ability to take input from a variety of perceptions and handle them all fairly, openly, honestly. And you're right, that's a skill that I know I don't have. And I admire you, the way you do, the way you are a leader, the way you advocate. We're lucky as a school system to have you as our superintendent of jury. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me go. And with that, let's send the jury to the front row.